And everybody should be in now.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good evening. I'm calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC, 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on October 4th, 2023 to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will propose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. After the hearing tonight, we will, the public part of this hearing, we will follow with our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff who are present, please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Mr. Edwards with the Environment Department.
Didi Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great. Thank you very much. Now I'll call the role of Commissioners who are present. Commissioner Long?
Nick Wong.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Okay, great. And before we get going tonight, I just want to let members of the public who may be here for the Nippon's it Spray Pad, that hearing has been continued at the request of the applicants, so we won't be discussing that project at all this evening. Okay, first item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 061958, Boston File Number 2023-048 from BSC Group Inc. on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed construction of a multi-use trail and amenities along the Nippon's River and Edgewater Drive between Osceola Street and Kennedy Playground located in Hyde Park and Matapan. Resource areas are bordering lands subject to flooding, 25-foot riverfront area, 25-foot waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to bank. This has been continued from the September 20th, 23 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Sir Parker, I apologize. We have interpreters tonight as well who were going to give instructions on how to join the correct channel.
Okay. Let's, we can do that now then. Are they doing it on our channel or a different channel?
Sarah, are you, are you able to unmute yourself and share instructions with how attendees can join the correct channel?
Oh, yes. Yes. Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. My name, my name is Sarah. I'm the Cantonese interpreter for tonight's meeting. Oh, Sarah, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent for DCR Edgewater?
Hi, this is Diana Walden from BSC Group, and I'm joined by Stella Lancing, the Project Manager from DCR. I believe that my, my colleague Singning and Ricardo may also be on from BSC Group. And so tonight, there's Ricardo, yes. So tonight, we are, we were continued so that we can further discuss tree removal along the greenway and also to review some of the red lines for our order of, order of conditions. Elena had provided the draft, DCR had provided some red lines, and I believe that was before the last commission meeting. And so, you know, we want to go through any of the changes that you had any questions on and ensure that those red lines worked for you and also go through some of the additional information that we have on tree removal that we started to discuss last, last meeting. So.
So Diana, before you get going, unfortunately, Elena was out ill most of the last two weeks, so we did not get a chance to confer on the order of conditions. So generally, what we do with that is we have the option of closing the hearing and issuing the order of conditions this evening or working through the comments with Elena and staff before the next hearing where we would issue the order of conditions. So why don't we handle it that way? So we just have not had time to confer.
Yeah, I, I believe Stella is on, and if she feels any differently, she can chime in, but I, I think that that would be, would be best as well.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So if you'd like to go forward by one slide, please? Oh, actually, I'm sorry. This is the original set of slides. We provided a supplemental set. So I'm not sure if that's on at the very, very end of all this. There we go. So this, this slide is the table that we had prepared to address a question of where in the project area are the trees being removed? And the original submittal and presentation had the trees broken down into the 25-foot riverfront area, the 25-foot waterfront area, and then beyond that into the 100-foot buffer zone. But the question was which, which trees are being removed directly within the path and shoulders, which is a 12-foot wide swath, so with the eight-foot path with the two-foot shoulders on either side, which are within 12 to 20 feet of the construction swath? And then which trees are beyond 20 feet to the limits of work? And so this, this provides a breakdown of those areas and similar to the previous, the previous table, we've described which ones are either dead or in poor condition to be removed, which ones are healthy but invasive, mostly lack locusts and some Norway maples and tree of heaven. And then there's healthy native trees that would also have to be removed. And just to note, which was described in the application, that this is a summary of trees that are six-inch DBH or greater. So just to be, you know, just to be clear that there are other saplings and trees to be removed, but this is the tree survey results and the designers also wanted to note that the final decision in, in the field would be made by landscape architects. So these numbers might vary slightly when, when construction actually begins, but this is to give you a scale of, of what's out there. And conditions may have changed. A tree that was once healthy made in the past few years, or I, I'm not sure exactly when the survey was done, but in the past year of design has maybe has become more in, in worse condition, and maybe that also needs to go where it was previously known as a, a healthy tree. If you'd like to go to, I don't know if you want to just soak in that information for a minute, or I can, if we go forward, maybe two more slides? And actually, maybe one more slide, please. This is just an example of the demolition plan set that was included with the notice of intent. And so that does give greater detail along the project route, which trees were considered poor in or in decline or dead, and those are marked with an X that would be removed. The purple represents an invasive tree that will be removed, and the blue are healthy trees that need to be removed. And if you want to look at the next two slides, it's just additional examples along the project to show you where the trees are being removed and in what part of the project work that they are located. And this is not a full set of the plans that is included with the application, but just to give an example of where that information could be found. And then this actually represents the planting plan to show where native species will be restored, planted and restored once, once the path is built. And a few slides back, we do have the planting plan and the schedule for the number of species, that each species and the number of species to be planted. I believe there's a total of about 115 native trees, over 300, maybe about 330 shrubs, native shrubs to be planted. There's some ground cover plugs, hay-scented fern and culvers root ground cover plugs, as well as native seed mixes to be, to be installed. And then also the invasive species management that is planned as part of the work and the debris removal, dumping piles of dumping and things to mitigate for the loss of the trees that do have to come down for the project. And that's basically a some summary of the additional materials. We do have, you know, other shots we could go back to if anybody wants to see anything.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Before we go to Commissioners, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Long. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so looking at some of the red lines on the order of conditions that we got from you, I know that, you know, invasive plant management after the construction phase is kind of a heavy lift for DCR. You know, that's understandable, but I know you mentioned in the September 6th hearing that DCR may be monitoring the vegetation that's being added to these areas. So I kind of wonder if we could maybe keep or keep and alter conditions 117 through 118. And those have to do with monitoring the plants that are added or the vegetation that's being proposed. Because, you know, if DCR staff or contractors may be out there already kind of monitoring, you know, it'd be great to see, you know, reports of, you know, that planting success. We could say, you know, instead of three growing seasons, you know, bring it down to two growing seasons, if that's okay with the other Commissioners. And we could even just say it's for the trees because we are looking at a lot of tree removals here. So I wonder Stella or Diana, what, what your reactions are to that?
I guess I have, Commissioner, thank you for your comment. I have a question about what you, can you maybe clarify about what you mean with regards to monitoring? Because that's not very clear. I'm not sure what the amount of lift would be for us, if you can explain more on what you mean by that.
I guess it would mean, you know, it is, you know, a condition that we look for, for, you know, projects like this, so it would mostly be, you know, at least in my mind, reporting plants that don't look healthy or maybe diseased or in decline and kind of, you know, bookmarking them. So then, you know, maybe in the second growing season, there's more scrutiny for a plant that's not looking as healthy. I'm, I'm not sure what DCR's protocol is for monitoring vegetation once it's added, but.
Yeah, I mean, we don't typically do that. We don't typically monitor, actively monitor, like, you know, write a report. We generally like, first of all, our operations teams who are out there, they don't, they don't have that ability to do that. We, we have it in our construction contracts that the contractors who plant vegetation, there's a warranty period and they have to come back and reinstall vegetation that has died and that didn't survive the first and second growing seasons. It depends on when in the construction process those are planted, but we typically generally don't do monitoring unless it's actually in a wetland and we're doing wetland restoration, which we're not doing over here. We are, again, trying very hard to follow up through other mechanisms through, in the agency to establish vegetation and to come back and replant, but it's not something that we have the ability to do for every project where we just have a system in place where that is happening all the time. So I think this would be one that would be really difficult for us to do.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I know it's, I know it's a large area and it's a lot of proposed plantings. And hearing, hearing about the two growing season warranty period, maybe I didn't get that first story you're reminding me, but that is, that is a pretty decent warranty period. So that, that does make me feel a little bit better, but that's really the only question I had.
Yeah. And I would, just to clarify with the warranty period, it's usually 12 months of the planting and sometimes that does cover two growing seasons. Sometimes it does just cover, you know, one active growing season. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not always a given that it could be two growing seasons, but it is, we do ask for a 12-month warranty period in our specifications.
Okay, thank you, Stella. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, thank you guys for sharing the restoration plan. Appreciate the additional drawings and clarity. I guess, one, I didn't, I don't know if it got cut off on my screen, but whether, I was wondering if there was a column for the number of trees that were actually retained versus the removal counts for the six inches or DBH or greater.
That is a good question. I don't know that we have quantified that. Ricardo, do you know if Singning might have that number? I don't know that it was something that we, we had marked down.
Well, in terms of the project area, what we had of the, 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 the tree survey do is, is look at the impact areas. So there are many more trees on site that we're not impacting. So we just looked at the zone that was part of that. So we do have a total quantity number. We could probably get that to you, but, but generally it was just limited to where we were actually kind of where we were going to be project impacts. Because there's clearly trees all the way downstream to the river's edge. So, and those weren't included and those weren't served. Just.
I don't know if you would mind going back a few slides and going back to those demo plans that have the Xs through the trees. You can see some do have tree protection around them as well when they're near the edge of the project limits. You can see that like dash black circle. And then beyond that, you know, there's a few trees, not even in the project limits, just the, you know, that gray shadow of them where they, you know, we're, in this case, this is, this is on the riverside of the wall. And if you go back a few more sheets, you can see there, there's some additional room between the project limits and the actual bank and mean annual high water of the river where there's some little extra space between the work area that we have and the, and the river.
Yeah.
And actually, if you went one more slide backwards. And then again, this is where the work is on the landward side of the existing masonry wall, and you can see the trees there along the riverbank that wouldn't be part of the project limits.
Okay, yeah, no, no, that's helpful. And I mean, I guess this sort of does confirm what I was scanning was that were the trees that are being retained that are larger than six inches are, it's on the orders of 10, low tens of trees versus, you know, the trees being removed that are greater than six inches is on the low hundreds of trees, which I think is just, brings up the question, which is kind of existential, is like whether this, the path was originally planned with trees as well, or whether the, you know, sort of, it seems like we're very site constrained and the trees took the hit. And I'm not sure that that's like the type of integrated type of path planning we've seen from DCR in the past or what we're wanting to be seeing in the city. I guess that, that's a number that I think is really important. And I mean, I understand that the limit, there's trees beyond the limit of work, but let's be honest, it's top of bank, it's within the buffer, it's, there's a site wall there. This isn't like, you know, the limit of work was drawn, you know, in some arbitrary way, and we're just happened to be, you know, impacting one area than another. I guess another question I had in terms of these root protection or tree protected areas, DCR has guidance that I found that's like, you know, the critical root zones on the order of an inch, each inch of DBH, there should be another foot. It seems a little inconsistent in terms of like, it also says that you should protect beyond the drip line, which I'm imagining for a six-inch tree, the drip line is going to be more than six feet. But I guess is that, is, are the lines that you're drawing consistent with that?
I don't think that they're to scale in that sense. I think it's just to show that this is an area where trees would protect it.
Okay. I mean, I guess that would be another concern is sort of stockpiling and materials and damage and all that type of stuff. We've seen much more detailed drawings from DCR in the past for the esplanade for this sort of situation. And I get that it's a different circumstance. We're removing a lot more trees than we were protecting. But, you know, I think that needs to be thought through or at least rationalized with DCR's guidance to municipalities. I guess the other bit is sort of, since there are so many trees being removed that are quite large, even if they are trees that make sense to remove, what's sort of the plan for decaying root material, subsidence, pathogens, other stuff that kind of comes in the sense that we are removing what's basically a fairly large forest and trying to put new plantings into it?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean with regards to decay and pathogens. Can you elaborate?
There's as much wood, in theory, under the surface as there is above the surface that you're removing.
Correct.
And that is all going to necessarily decay over time and is helping stabilize the bank and
Right.
that material. So in terms of sort of a Commissioner Long was asking, what, what sort of monitoring is in place to not have this whole path kind of sink down a couple inches here and there and, you know?
So I think one thing that should be noted is that we're not, we're staying well away from the bank. We do not want to undermine the bank at all. And so we've kept our trail as far away from the top of bank as possible. And this is why it really is going, as you can see in this view, on the side of the wall between the residences and the wall, because that's where the bank really narrows. So we're not destabilizing the bank in that area. And then when you move eastwards towards Kennedy Playground, again, we're staying far away from the bank. And so we're not proposing to remove trees that are sitting on top, like right on that bank edge. We really are making an effort to not destabilize that riverbank.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that the location, like center point of the tree is not on the bank. But I guess with DCR's guidance yet again, you know, the roots are known to extend beyond the drip line. The drip line, I'm pretty sure is going beyond the lip work. The drip line, if it's a tree, it's going to be going down into the river. It's, you know, it's going to seek water and it's in the top six to 24 inches. So.
Well, this is exactly why.
Trees are also beyond your limit of work and in the bank.
Right.
Probably likely, right?
Yeah, I mean, but this is also comes back to the whole issue of being careful and intentional with regards to, you know, what is a realistic limit of work? What is a realistic tree removal strategy so that we are not creating situations where you, where we are destabilizing this area?
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, we're gonna, we could, we're, our tree protection specification is really robust. We do have tree protection at the edge of drip line wherever possible. There are some instances where we're going to be very close to, closer than we'd like to, to certain trees. But we're gonna, you know, do our utmost best to protect those. And then we're gonna, you know, look at the conditions in the field, of course, make sure we bring in enough additional material to stabilize the area. And again, having vegetation under story, vegetation seeding, et cetera, to help stabilize the area afterwards is, is our goal.
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you. And I, I believe you guys, once, you know, we see all the plans, we'll do that. The, it does go back to Commissioner Long's point that like, this is, you know, we need, we need to have some sort of robust monitoring plan. We've had these from DCR in the past on again, Charles River Esplanade. No, it's a different condition. I get it. It's a different budget. It's a different constituency, but I think, you know, the, at least knowing that there's a head, acknowledgement of potential long-term issues associated with the sort of near-term actions that are being taken is something I would really want to see.
I mean, I, I, you know, I, I just want to be realistic again. We have limitations at what we can do in terms of monitoring at DCR. There is a difference of when you're working within the wetland and replicating versus where we are working now. So it's not a wetland. There's, there is a difference. And I do not feel comfortable with having a condition that demands that we monitor all the vegetation in this project. And, you know, I, I think it will be one that might not be. It would be difficult for DCR to meet that condition.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I hear it's, it's additional effort. I mean, I guess the, the work that was done on sort of over in the Alston side with DCR, I think, was done in conjunction with a project partner. So maybe that's something that, you know, could take the burden and sort of align some stewardship incentives with the community. You know, I think this could be a little more creative because, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I.
What you're proposing is quite impactful. And then to say that we can't follow up on what those impacts may be, isn't really acceptable.
Well, I completely understand what you're asking. And, you know, if it was, if I had the ability to be able to, you know, do all those things, I definitely would. We do not have a partnership such as the Esplanade Association in this area. So we do not have that luxury. We do have a community that is extremely engaged, but they do not have the resources of the Esplanade Association. So again, I mean, I think, you know, the fact that we are the DCR and we are going to do the best that we can not to have this area you know, have those negative impacts. I think, I mean, I think that should be enough. I just, I just want to again, be realistic. I don't think putting a monitoring condition in here is going to be helpful in the long term. It's, 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 you know, I just think it's going to be a hindrance for us.
Okay, I think, I think we know where we are. Commissioner Wilson, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just one more question. In terms of that sort of root protection and that type of thing of the existing trees there, and I forgot just off the top of my head, is in addition to sort of the XY sort of aerial protection around the trees, are you guys proposing to put down like, say the, you know, as again, DCR guidance, six to 10 inches of mulch to protect the compaction and that sort of thing? Because I think you're going to get pretty jammed up there with the proximity of proposed work next to existing trees.
I agree with you that that is a really good mitigation measure. I have myself implemented putting in mulch around trees that are adjacent or nearby or within construction zones. It really does help. It really does help to prevent the compaction. It helps to provide moisture and nutrients. So I'd be happy to have a tree protection detail that also shows, um, additional mulch rings as mitigation.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you guys. And I know you've put a lot of thought into this and I appreciate it. And it's a tough site and. Yeah, I defer to my fellow commissioners.
Okay. Um, you know what, Commissioner Herbst, just to continue this, if you have anything, I'm going to go to you and then I'll go back to Commissioner Richmond.
Okay. Um, thank you. So I, I had requested this analysis. Um, and I, I want to acknowledge that I think, uh, the two commissioners that have spoken are, are, have much more expertise on the subject. So I want to just note why I brought it up and to see if it, it looks like their focus is in a little bit of a different direction, but we've had recently two different projects. One near, uh, Allendale Woods where we did agree that, that a fair number of invasive trees could come out and should come out. And I think that's because we felt like there was really a comprehensive restoration plan. And we had, had another location, I think in Brighton, next to the pond that's in Brighton, where there was so much tree removal that we in the end asked and, and, and like, I can't remember the proponent, but the proponent did, keep a lot of the invasive trees, uh, cause it just didn't seem sort of like the right mix of behavior. So, and my question, because it is so much tree removal was whether uh, it really was necessary, uh, to take out the trees that are outside of that 10-foot protection zone that you had cited. And so I actually would just put that question to the two commissioners who've been involved, whether they think, and those are, but they're both invasive and, and native trees in that area. I think it's maybe 45 trees. So whether that is something to consider keeping, I, I'd be interested in, in their opinions on that, either the natives or the invasive or both. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Commissioner Wilson, did you want to, um, respond to that? You may be doing childcare duty. Commissioner Long, let's go to you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Herbst. I think that is, um, that is a good question to consider, um, whether those removals are necessary and, um, yeah, how, how they're prioritized for public safety or, um, invasiveness.
Um, so I could respond. So, um, we looked at our width of our path, which is 12 feet, the eight-foot pave plus the two-foot shoulders, and then went 10 feet out of that. Um, so, you know, when you're cutting and excavating and you're cutting close to trees and you're cutting within the 10 feet of the, um, the tree trunk, you do damage the tree roots. And there is a possibility that over time, and we see that mostly within that 10-foot zone, that that is an issue where you have now introduced, you've made a bigger cut on a tree root. That's a one-inch diameter, larger than a one-inch diameter. And over time, the tree goes into decline and then could become, uh, public safety hazard. And so we looked at that as being sort of our guidance. And, um, again, I think we could probably, um, look at specifically some of the natives and see, you know, are we at the 10-foot mark or are we closer? And then I think that's really how we decided which, how those trees, whether they should stay or not. So.
Okay. Could I, could I just say that I, but what I'm talking about is the beyond the 20-foot zone. There are 34 healthy but invasive, nine healthy native trees to be removed. I mean, I'd be interested if there's anything at the outer edge of the 10 feet, but I was focusing on the trees you've identified to remove that are outside of that safety zone you identified.
Yeah, I am not familiar with, with the nine native species. I don't know if Ricardo can comment on that. We could definitely review those outside of that 20-foot zone. If that makes sense.
I, I, I think we'd be, I think we're happy to review it. I, 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 I want to assure the commissioners that, um, this project really is meaningful in a profound way, not only for the environmental justice component of, of what this will, how this will positively impact the community, but also the ability to try to preserve as much green space to a community that has traditionally not had much open space or green space. And so I, I believe in those, uh, those values very, very dearly to me. I am actually live very close to the Allendale Woods project, so I am familiar with that project as well. Um, I think that the trees, so I, uh, we approached this in a very kind of careful manner of not removing trees and the nine trees that will or we estimated needed to be removed, needed to be removed because there were issues regarding regrading of the path. So that the path made ADA accessibility, um, metrics. And also because part of the issue is we are creating openings in a wall that has essentially blocked off the green space to this environmental justice community for over 80 years. And people have been dumping fill and all kinds of materials that will need to be renewed so that we can actually, actually perforate the wall in key areas so that the community can actually, for the first time, enjoy this resource. So those were the considerations that were taken from a design and landscape architecture and from an, uh, a horticultural perspective and understanding why we had to remove those trees. I'm happy to, as part of the design team and someone who's very committed to this project, uh, to its fruition, to review what those nine tree removals are, because that was not taken very lightly at all. Um, so I'm happy to look at those nine trees, but I just wanted to sort of frame the problem to the commissioners so they understand what is at stake for the people of Matapana along the Edgewater.
Ricardo, I, um, just thinking about what you're saying too, it's possible that some of those nine treat, the nine healthy trees and even some of the, um, or the nine natives and even some of the healthy invasives, maybe in, there's, um, a proposed adult fitness area that requires some clearing to add in that little pocket, um, pocket fitness area next to the Kennedy Playground. And, you know, then as you mentioned, there's also wall openings and um, the viewing locations. And so it's possible, um, that the analysis was very literal to the path and some of the areas beyond the 20 feet are actually because of the, um, adult fitness area and some of the other features that, that you were mentioning for the, the wall openings and things like that.
All right. And I just want to note that I, I also think this project is very important. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and, and that's why it's, it's a little, it's hard to see, you know, 230 trees going, uh, you know, so I very supportive of the project. I just think we want to take a hard look at, at how it's designed. But I'll hope that Commissioner Wilson is ready to say.
Yep. Commissioner Wilson, are you back?
So, sorry, I left the oven on. I don't, I mean, it was obviously fine for a while. Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the only things that also came to mind was that, um, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the revisiting, B, whether in terms of like, I get that there may not be an adjacent community partner, but maybe some organization like Speak for the Trees, I know has been trying to partner different neighborhoods. So like, you know, folks in one part of the city might be willing to go and help with monitoring in another part of the city, since we are all sort of part of this environmental justice and equity movement. The other part is, uh, I was just trying to get a sense of tree decline. It seems like, you know, the experts are a little bit, whatever, divergent opinions that either it's like, it can happen within a season or for a bigger tree, it can happen over 10 years. I mean, I guess that might be one of the things where it's like some of the funds that are, you know, effort that is being set aside for additional tree removal is, you know, set that aside for, over the longer term, find somebody who can monitor it or whatnot, and then come back and revisit it if it does, you know, present itself um, with these cuts within 10 feet, uh, immediately. Um, some of the stuff that I've read also is like, it's not so much the proximity, it's more the percent area that's removed. I mean, it's, it's, it's a bit of a, um, I don't know, it, it, it feels like it'd be hard to apply sort of like a strict rule of thumb in this case. And, um, the monitoring is a, well, not practical solution. The short term is probably what, you know, would in an ideal world be part of what we would want to do and is, you know, something that like, we got a new urban forest master plan. This could be a valuable data point. And, um, if we just take a few minutes or whatever to think about the longer term plan, and maybe it doesn't totally encumber DCR. You know, there may be a few more trees we can have. And I mean, I get the sense of, you know, liability of failing trees and stuff like that is not good. But, um, you know, on the other hand, being entirely risk averse is probably not in the benefit of the community either.
Great. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. I, I've really, um, learned a lot from this conversation and I'm not sure I have a lot more uh, to offer, but I, I would just, um, say that we've heard, um, from in a, in other discussions of the benefit of the, um, tree canopy, um, even if it is invasive. Um, and, and so, um, I'm, I'm not sure um, based on what I've heard, um, that pulling out, you know, all of those trees, um, all at once, uh, or even shortly, uh, it is going to provide, uh, the benefit to this community, um, that is being asserted. So I, I'm, I'm still a bit on the fence about, um, you know, approving the removal of those trees, um, outside the, the, um, the, the buffer zone. And I join in that concern with the, um, remarks of Commissioner Herbst and Commissioner Wilson.
Um, thank, so I, I just, may I, um, respond? Um, so I do want to say that we are not just removing trees because they're in case of, we are trying our best again, as Ricardo said, we are trying to limit the removal of trees to what we need um, for the project. We are not going indiscriminately and saying, well, you know, for ease of construction, let's just remove a whole lot. We are being careful about it. We are being realistic about tree removal. Um, and I mean, I don't like removing canopy, but the fact is we, the community would like a trail. The community needs a park. And we are going to need to remove some trees to be able to build the trail. And we are not going to be removing trees unnecessarily for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Eleanor, did you have anything to add to this?
I, I don't have anything to add to this. Thank you.
Okay. Um, do we have anybody from the public? I see we have one raised hand. Uh, let's throw it out to the public.
Uh, yes. Hi, uh, thank you for the time to speak this evening. This is Jody Valenta. I'm the Mass, uh, Massachusetts State Program Director for the Trust for Public Land. We are the supporting organization that has worked directly with the community on behalf of, um, the, the DCR on this project. And, uh, we've been working closely with the community for years, um, well before my time actually, and well before COVID, um, to have this project come to fruition. And, um, though we, uh, agree with, uh, the necessity of keeping trees, uh, the Trust for Public Land supports climate, um, uh, uh, supporting, uh, uh, climate resilience. It's a top priority for our organization. But additional, additionally equity, health and all the, uh, health and all the benefits of having access to the outdoors is also a top priority of ours. And I would just like to speak on behalf of the community that they've waited many, many years for this project. I know, uh, the project, uh, I've been working with Stella and, uh, the, uh, landscape architect, architects on this. And I, uh, can vouch that they have been working very diligently to, uh, protect uh, everything that is possible to protect. So I just want to raise my voice on behalf of the community and, um, make sure that it's known that they've been waiting for many years on this. So, um, uh, though we don't support removing unnecessary trees, I believe the due diligence has been done. Uh, and so just wanted to speak out in support of this.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. And thank you for all the work that you do in your organization. Um, Eleanor, anybody else from the public?
I'm, oh yes, we have one other hand raised.
Thank you.
Hi, I think, uh, I was personally my hand raised. Um, sorry, I'm in between meetings right now, so there might be some background audio, but, um, my name is Andres Ripley and I work for the Napa Ponson River Watershed Association. And I also just want to voice my support for this project. Um, Stella and the team have done a great job, uh, engaging with the community and making sure they're going through a robust process to, um, you know, think about the different amenities of this project and think about what the community really wants and what they've been asking for, for a long time. Um, of course, uh, our organization does, uh, you know, think about the water quality in the river and really does want to keep trees where it's necessary. Um, but I think Stella and the team have done a good job of looking at where they can keep trees and where they really do need to remove them, uh, for the, for the betterment for the neighborhood and for this, uh, path. So, again, they have my full support and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing the next steps, uh, come to fruition with this project. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andres. And again, uh, same, thank you for all the work that you and your organization does. Um, and just want to clarify, uh, clearly we're all, um, in support of this project. It's a very important project. Um, you know, our job is to try to make it better from a, um, protection of wetland resources, um, uh, perspective, also, uh, evaluating the climate, uh, impacts of climate change. So we're in no way trying to be obstructionist. But I think there's some, some questions that are still open, uh, with the commissioners. I think Stella, you and your team, um, uh, have heard, uh, the additional information that we're looking for, uh, a little bit more examination and detail. And that's, that's what I have. I don't know, um, uh, if you need any clarification on, um, additional information that we're asking for tonight, or you've taken good notes and, um, you know what, you know what we're looking for.
So just to clarify, you want us to identify those 45 trees that are out of the 20-foot swath, just to confirm where they are, which I think Diana is, is correct in mentioning those are at the fitness area and at the wall openings. Is that correct? And then we will, um, review the red lines?
Yeah, let's review the red lines and, you know, and, and frankly, for the amount of work that's being done, and I understand your budgetary constraints. Um, we have to think long and hard about the restoration plan conditions in the monitoring, um, as you, um, and, and I thank you for your honesty and frankness, uh, when, um, Commissioner Long thought that we were looking at two growing seasons, you were able to, to correct him, uh, and it could in fact be one growing season. Um, you know, for a project this large with the impacts that it's going to have, um, we're going to really have to think about that. Uh, and, um, you know, would, would hope that you could get a bit creative on how we're gonna, how we're gonna tackle that, uh, particular issue. Okay. Okay. Um, so with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye, and I appreciate hearing from the other folks who are supporting the project. That's always great to have some context. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, five, six in Boston file number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, four, six. From TRC Environmental Corporation on behalf of Pilot House Properties LLC for the proposed repairs to an existing seawall. At Sergeant Sworf located at Sergeant Sworf, North End, Boston. The resource areas are numerous. Wow, coastal beaches, coastal banks, rocky intertidal shores. Land subject to coastal storm flowage, twenty-five foot waterfront, one hundred foot buffer to coastal beaches, one hundred foot buffer to coastal banks, one hundred foot. Buffer to rocky intertidal shores. This has been continued from the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Olympia Baucher from Anderson and Krieger, and I'm here on behalf of Pilot House.
Great.
So as you mentioned, we presented the project plans at the September twentieth hearing and answered questions. I'm happy to recap kind of the project overview if you'd like, but where we left off was that because of. Elena's illness, we had to postpone going through the orders of conditions and the specific conditions of this project, which we have since worked out offline. And I believe we've come to agreement on what those conditions may be in the ultimate order. And I believe all that was left was a vote, but I'm happy to again go through a project overview to refresh the commission's memory.
No, I, I think that's right. The last time you didn't have your. DEP file number, if I remember correctly. Eleanor, how are we standing with the conditions?
Yeah, so as mentioned, we were able to connect offline and the only sort of outstanding item were those. Stormwater conditions, which I was unsure about and wanted to check in.
Oh, okay. So Olympia, our commissioner from BWSC is not here this evening. I did look over the stormwater conditions. I think we had discussed last time that if there are no storm drains and. Stormwater features that we're looking at here, then the conditions don't apply. I'm very reluctant to. Delete any of the stormwater conditions without Commissioner Sullivan's input. And I think that we did discuss though, that whole notion that, you know. For taking, for instance, the stormwater drains, if there aren't any, clearly you're not obligated to. To administer to anything that's non-existent.
Yes, we did discuss that. There was one condition which we would prefer to be removed. I believe it's condition fifty-six where it says. Plans need to be submitted to the Water and Sewer Commission and approved in writing before work can begin. And since there's no. There's no jurisdiction over that. We just wanted to make crystal clear to the contractors that that's not a pre-construction requirement. I understand leaving them in. If they're not applicable, definitely is a common practice and makes things. Simpler on the administrative end, but we just want to make sure that our contractors aren't jumping through hoops. For pre-construction conditions that don't necessarily apply.
Understood, and that, that was one condition that I did look at. Can we just insert if applicable?
Oh, and Chair Parker, I'd actually, I'd remove that on our end, so. So that, yeah, that condition was, was taken out.
Okay, then I think we're set.
Yep, then the remaining stormwater conditions are, are fine and we will comply with them if applicable. And if not, we won't need to.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, Eleanor, anybody from the public? Raise your hand.
I do not see any raised hands and I'm also not seeing anything in our inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions as amended.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
I.
Commissioner Wilson?
I.
Commissioner Richmond?
I.
Commissioner Herbst?
I.
And I vote I, that carries five. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, six, five in Boston file number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, five. From GZA Geo Environmental Inc. on behalf of the Dorchester Yacht Club for the proposed replacement of the open deck area. With a steel frame, steel pipe supported deck with timber decking. Within the footprint of the existing deck located at one hundred Placed Road in Dorchester. Resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal beaches, beaches, salt marsh, tidal flat. One hundred foot buffer to salt marsh and one hundred foot buffer to tidal flat. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi there, my name is Joshua Zoll from GZA Geo Environmental and I'm here on behalf of the Dorchester Yacht Club. I also have Peter Walsh, the project contractor, and Jamie Buchanan Medea was the environmental council for the Dorchester Yacht Club. Elena, if possible, could we have them unmuted so that they can chime in if needed?
Great, okay, thank you. Floor is all yours.
All right, thank you very much, members of the commission. As Commissioner Parker mentioned, this is the open deck repair project for the Dorchester Yacht Club. We have submitted this notice of intent pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance. Also prior to this notice of intent filing, the owner, the door, the. Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation has reviewed this application and they gave their blessing and signature. To the Dorchester Yacht Club who leases the property. Excuse me, if you can go on to the next slide, please. So just a brief synopsis of the project, the Dorchester Yacht Club was founded in eighteen seventy and currently sits at one hundred Placed Road in Dorchester. It is along the shores of the Dorchester Bay Basin. And the, as I noted before, the, the property is owned by Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation and leased by the yacht club. The site consists of a filled pier with a clubhouse building, a pile-supported storage locker facility. And then an open deck, pile-supported open deck that spans between the two of them. And that's the area that we're going to be talking about tonight. The, the proposed project is because the, the timber piles that support this open deck are severely. Deteriorated and as are the framing members, currently the, the open deck has limited access to clubhouse members. Elena, you can probably attest to the condition of the timber piles as you were there the other day to look at this area. This deck is a safety hazard to both the environment and the yacht club members if it were to fall in or collapse. Due to the, the deterioration. The project includes the removal, as I mentioned, of the elements of the structure that are, that are severely deteriorated. And as this is an existing authorized structure, it's been in place for many years and it's an existing authorized structure. This is considered maintenance and repair. To this existing authorized structure. And like I mentioned earlier. Mass DCR has reviewed the, the notice of intent. And we also received the file number and technical comments which have been addressed by. Mass DEP Northeast Regional Office. If you could go onto the next slide, Eleanor. So the resource areas that are, that fall under this project consist of title, title flats and coastal beach. Three, ten CMR, ten twenty-seven. And this is the area that's directly beneath the open deck structure. The proposed work includes the removal of twelve square feet of timber piles, deteriorated timber piles. And the installation of six new steel pipe piles, which results in a net reduction of six square feet of the resource area. The. In addition to that, there is the hundred foot buffer zone to the tidal flats and there is potential for contractor storage up in the parking facility. That is within the hundred foot buffer zone. Also on the site, although not within the direct area of the open deck, there is salt marsh. And like I said, there is no direct impact of the salt marsh, but two of the piles that are proposed to be installed are within the one hundred foot buffer. Of the salt marsh. And then the final, the final is land subject to coastal storm flowage, which consists of the, the deck itself. If you could go to the next page. I believe that explains all the, the things that I just discussed. The, the hundred foot, the hundred year. Female elevation at the site is thirteen point zero and the existing deck is approximately eleven point five. And then if you could go onto the next slide. Leave that should have the proposed work. So yeah, this is the, the proposed layout of the, of the repair. The work will have a barge to remove the existing timber piles, the existing deteriorated timber piles. And one of the technical comments from the, the DEP was that. They want us to know if coffered dams were going to be used for the removal of the piles. And the intent of this project is to have the, the work done during periods of low tide. So as to have no impact to marine life or turbidity in the water column. And then the barge would be located in such a manner that it, it doesn't bottom out or settle in the substrate during those times. The existing deteriorated piles will be removed and disposed of offsite. And like I mentioned, they'll be, they'll be removed in the dry. We've also looked at, there were some alternatives that we had looked at for this. One of them was to just replace in kind with more timber piles, but that would increase. Impacts to the, to the resource area. As they would need more timber piles than are currently exist. Another option was to use no piles. And to attempt to span the, the gap with a beam, a large beam, but that would require. Additional support on the locker storage facility and likely the, the seawall at the clubhouse side. So that wasn't, wasn't quite feasible. And finally, the, the proposed work includes a change of materials from timber to steel. And the steel is, is able to be adapted in the future for potential sea level rise and, and is, is more resilient than the timber structures. Also would be the reduction of. The total number of piles that are to be used on the site. And that's, that's the general synopsis of the project and I guess from there I'd open it up for questions.
Sure, great. Couple of quick questions for you, Joshua. One is, how are the new piles being installed? What sort of? Drive pile driving system we're using?
Likely it'll be vibratory, but it would either be vibratory or impact hammer. But based on the, based on the likelihood of sand and, and the material that's anticipated, it's probably vibratory.
Yeah, I think that would be our preference. As far as managing potential debris, how are you handling that?
One of the comments that we got from the Division Marine Fisheries indicated that they did not want to have. Turbidity curtains or debris booms in the intertidal zone so that they did not impact the. The substrate and the, the tidal flats, coastal beach. So we were planning on having debris booms on, on hand. Potentially removing them and using them only in periods of high tide or, or just keeping them seaward of mean low water.
Okay, makes sense. And factoring in sea level rise, steel, the steel pilings, are they going to be elevated?
They, they won't, they won't be elevated. They're, they're going to be installed so that the deck is in the same elevation as the current deck. Just, just because the deck on the clubhouse side and the deck on the opposite side where the lockers are, are all at the same elevation. So in order to raise. This deck repair, there would have to be. Additional increases to the, the other structures on the, on the facility.
Okay, understood. Eleanor, you were out there. Your impressions?
Uh, I was, yeah, I, I can attest to the fact that the, the piles are not looking, or yeah, they're not looking great. So this seems like a good choice.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Long, what do you have?
Uh, thank you, Chair Parker. So I'm, I'm here representing the Boston Parks and Recreation Department and. We're on your butters list and in your NOI, you know, needing to access through McConnell Playground. So in case you haven't already, just need to flag for you. That your contractor needs to apply for a construction access license with the Parks and Recreation Department.
Right, yep, that's on, that's on our list, correct.
Alright, great, thank you.
That's all I. Thank you.
Fantastic, you're a worthy successor to Commissioner Garen. I remember him bringing this up for work over in this area before. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, just a question more out of curiosity. Most of the, you know, sort of what Joe Parker was alluding to. The proposals we see is either for a deck raise or for floating decks. I was just wondering if you knew off the top of your head, just from working around here. Whether there are other fixed decks that were sort of at these old. You know, or not old, but historic seawall heights and because I, I just, I can't come up with them off the top of my head, but, but probably a lack of imagination.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any off, offhand. I do know that the, the current deck is elevated. Four feet roughly above the top of the, the filled pier. That is beneath the clubhouse. So it is elevated from the old top of seawall. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think I'm just trying to get at is basically this is an atypical condition and that we probably don't have any. Precedence of what we've asked before, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, you bring up a good point. It, it makes me think. It makes me think that this is something that, an issue that we need to. Think about a little bit more deeply and I think when staff gets. How should I say, we, we, I think you all know, we were able to hire our assistant. Secretary Executive Director today, so we've been a bit short-staffed, but Eleanor, this. Whole issue of climate resiliency for peers and when they come in proposing repairs. I think that's something that we need to give some thought to when you, when you have time.
I appreciate it, yeah, I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Yep, maybe you could talk to the commissioner about it. Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, I just was trying to understand, you're going to do the work in the dry, but you say the barge isn't going to bottom out and I was wondering.
That's correct. Mean, mean low water is just seaward of the pier itself. So the barge is going to be positioned further offshore where there is currently deeper water for the floats that are on site.
And it, and it can reach that distance.
It should be able to, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Great, thank you. Eleanor, did anybody raise their hand?
I'm not seeing any hands raised and I'm also not seeing any emails.
Okay, Joshua, do you have any issues with the standard order of conditions?
So we had, we had gone through the order of conditions and I had redlined. Quite a few of them that really didn't pertain to the project mainly relating to stormwater. Because there, there isn't really any stormwater issues for this project. Also, the ones, sorry, I'm just scrolling through them now. There were ones relating to. Sorry, tree removal and, and vegetation management, which we don't really, we don't have at the site because. It's, it's the deck over the tidal flats, but the main ones were relating to the, the, the Boston Water and Sewer. Requirements that were mentioned in one of the previous, previous discussions and then, then all the, all the ones related to. BMPs for operation maintenance plans for, for stormwater maintenance.
Okay, Eleanor, did you get a chance to? Look over the red line here?
I'm sorry, no, that I, I hadn't had a chance.
I'm actually having a hard time finding it. Hold on one second. So Joshua, I would, you probably heard. You probably heard what. What I had said in the last hearing about conditions, if they're not applicable, then they're not applicable and we. We, we like to keep our standard condition form standard. That being said, I guess we have a couple of options. If you're comfortable with. Hold on, maybe I'm finding it now. No, I can't find it. I apologize. If you're comfortable with.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It, it should be uploaded now. I'm so sorry, Josh. I, I missed that email. But yeah, Chair Parker, they should be in the folder now.
I was gonna say, it just appeared. That's strange. Okay, so Joshua, if you're comfortable with the. Conditions as they are, we could vote on closing the hearing and issuing our standard order of conditions. If you're not, then. I would suggest that you, we could close this hearing, but you should. Communicate with Eleanor between now and two weeks from now when we would issue the order of conditions. So that would be.
Could we add the words if applicable to those, those conditions?
I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody, anybody, any other commissioner have a problem with that? Sounds like a no. So with that addition, I think we would be able to close the hearing and issue this order of conditions.
That'd be excellent. We, we would appreciate that.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close this hearing. Issue the order of conditions with the aforementioned edits that we discussed with the applicant.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five to nothing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, next item on the agenda is noticement ten for DEP file number zero zero six one nine six three and Boston file number twenty twenty three. Dash zero five three from Epsilon Associates Inc. on behalf of twenty two Dry Dock LLC for the proposed redevelopment. Of twenty two Dry Dock Avenue and three three nine Northern Avenue, including construction of a new building. Stormwater management system and landscaping located at twenty two Dry Dock and three three nine Northern Avenue in South Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage and designated port area. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening Chair Parker, Eric Rexford from Epsilon Associates. Uh, I am joined by several colleagues on the project team. Uh, design and engineering folks, the applicant uh, as well, I believe Lindsay Newtonson, Mark Donigan from the call, as is um. Chris Hohny from Niche Engineering is the civil on this project.
Great, thank you. Floor is all yours.
Thank you kindly, if you could go to the first slide, please. Um, project site, uh, as you mentioned, is located at twenty two Dry Dock Avenue, uh, bounded by the. Yellow border shown on the figure on your screen. Uh, project sites in the Raymond L Flynn. Marine Park, and you may recall, we were before the commission with a notice of intent, uh, late spring, early summer. Um, we had submitted a notice of intent requesting authorization for an enabling package that included. Uh, demolition and removal of the existing structures on the site and some associated subsurface utility improvements. Uh, in the abutting uh, rights away. This is a separate notice of intent uh, for the full redevelopment of the project, which I'll I'll talk about in a minute. Um, but if you can go to the next slide, I'll just point out the the resource areas that we're going to be discussing. Uh, slides doing a lot of work, I apologize. Uh, again, the the project sites in the yellow, the yellow box, um. It is in the South Boston Designated Port Area, so we're we're talking about DPA. Uh, and it's entirely located within uh, under your flood plain categorized as land subject to coastal storm flowage. Other resources areas nearby include the coastal bank and buffer zone and the uh, twenty five foot waterfront area. Those resource areas are not located on the project site, however, so we're just talking about DPA. Uh, and and subject to coastal storm flowage. Next slide, please. You can go to the next slide, that'd be great. I think it's just going, uh, existing conditions. I assume that, oh, thank you very much. Uh, so yeah, existing conditions, uh, these are the structures that will be removed. Uh, under the extent order of conditions, this is the building at twenty two Dry Dock. Uh, and if you can jump to the next slide, that's the building at, um, I'm sorry, this is the building at twenty. If you can go to the next slide, that will be the building at twenty two Dry Dock. Um, again, both of these structures will be removed under the extent order of conditions. Um, and jump ahead, two more slides at this point. Um, yeah, one more, please. Uh, both buildings will be replaced with a single structure. Uh, shown on the screen here, it's a seven story. Building uh, with two levels of below grade parking comprising approximately three hundred and twenty thousand square feet of research laboratory and office use. Uh, three different perspectives of the the proposed structure, the one on the left. Um, is from Dry Dock looking east, uh, at the proposed building, you can see the design center off to the right, um. Next slide, please. Um, because the the site's located in the Marine Park and and more specifically land subject to coastal storm flowage, um, the work proposed in the NOI. Um, directly integrates climate resilience and adaptation measures that have been developed in coordination um, with the city of Boston. Specifically staff at the BPDA during the project's Article eighty review process. Um, the approach to resiliency at this site is is primarily a function of the building design itself. In this instance, the ground floor of the building has been elevated uh, two feet above the projected sea level rise, um, base flood elevation. So that's the base flood elevation twenty seventy, counting for for sea level rise. Um. You'll also notice that uh, there's an elevated transformer platform outside the building that is also elevated above the sea level rise base flood elevation. Uh, I should mention too that at at this site, the that sea level rise base flood elevation is nineteen point five feet. Boston City Bay, so that the ground floor of the building will be at elevation twenty one point five, as will be that uh, transformer platform. Uh, given the site constraints and and needing to make connection to existing grades at Dry Dock, Tide Street and and Northern Avenue, there are elements of the project at grade. Uh, the loading dock and entrance to the garage will be at grade. Those aspects of the project will be um, protected from flooding events by deployable flood barriers. You can see those called out in the pink. Uh, so a barrier for the the loading dock and also for the garage entrance. Uh, if you can jump to the next slide, you'll see it in section view, makes it a little bit more clear, uh, at least relative elevation. Um, the pink line across the the bottom of the the figure is the sea level rise base flood elevation at nineteen point five feet. So again, ground floor of the building is at twenty one and a half feet. As is the elevated transformer platform, uh, and in this section, you can see the deployable flood barrier for the for the loading dock. The top of that barrier, again, above that projected base flood elevation. You don't see uh, the barrier for the garage entrance, just as a matter of how this section was cut, but uh, same approach to that entrance as well. Um, next slide, please. We uh, included a comprehensive um, plan set for the proposed landscape. This is just an overview of it. Uh, I believe we have folks from the team. Available to answer uh, specific questions if you have any, um, but I I will note that there is a a full plan set for the landscape um, in the notice of intent. Uh, but just to give you a a sort of sense of of what's being proposed, the next couple of slides, if you can jump one more, representative uh, images of the proposed landscape. Um, the next slide, I believe, is the the mid block passage. Uh, yep, so this is uh, pedestrian pathway between Dry Dock Avenue and Northern Avenue. Um, uh, pedestrian pathway, uh, separates the proposed building uh, in the render on the right from the existing EDIC parking garage. Um, next slide, um, shows the, I believe it's the Northern Avenue frontage. Um, again, uh, when we get to that slide, I promise it's coming. Well, uh, you'll be able to see, yeah, um, so from Northern Avenue, looking at the 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 building, again, you can see. Uh, how the landscape also functions to transition from grade at Northern Avenue up to that. Twenty one and a half uh, elevation um, for the ground floor of the building. And one more slide, um. Same thing, this one uh, is mislabeled, I apologize. I believe this is showing the uh, Tide Street. Uh, frontage, but again, um, representative of the landscape that's being proposed in that plaza, again. Showing the 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 functional aspect of that landscape, making the transition from grade at at Tide Street um, and up to the ground floor of the building. I'll also note that um. The the project site, although it is land subject to coastal storm flowage, it it's heavily degraded, um, in that sense that it's almost entirely impervious surface, and so. Um, we're proposing a redevelopment uh, of um, heavily degraded land subject to coastal storm flowage that will constitute a significant improvement. I mentioned Chris Hohny's on the call, he designed the stormwater management system, um, but yeah, happy to answer any questions about that. Uh, and certainly, you know, from a stormwater management perspective in terms of reducing peak rate flows, um. The quality of stormwater leaving the site and infiltration, this is a significant improvement, um. Indeed, the the design of the building itself, um, you know, from a mitigation, the impacts of climate change, certainly an improvement over what exists today. Uh, so with that, I'll I'll turn it back over to the commission, happy to answer any questions. Like I said, we have a number of of folks from the project team. Uh, available to answer those questions, thank you.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, Eric. Uh, okay, um, if you don't mind, uh, I would like to hear from Chris just for a couple of minutes about the stormwater management um, system. The project.
Sure, um. So, we have designed a storm management system for the site, it consists of um, a number of. Underground stormwater infiltration systems, uh, consisting of pipe and stone or structures in stone, um, just plastic arch chambers. Um, so stormwater from the impervious areas on the site and from the roof of the building is going to flow to those, um. And their size to meet the Boston Water and Sewer and BPDA uh, volume requirements. Uh, so. As Eric mentioned. Part of the enabling work was uh, actually to relocate a storm drain. That currently runs through the site, um, so that we can enable the construction of the building. Um, so it could run through the site right now from Northern Ave down to Dry Dock Avenue, um. The plan that we had had before you earlier in in the year, relocated that out into Northern Avenue, so we'll actually have. Some additional flows going out towards Northern Avenue, we've worked through that with Boston Water and Sewer, we've received approval. Um, from them for this project, we got that on the twenty eighth of September. Um. But so essentially, there would be a slight increase in flows to the Northern Ave. Side of the building, but overall from the project site, we're reducing. Um, rates of stormwater as exiting the site in all storms.
Great, thank you, and you said you got your BWSE approval on the twenty eighth, so, okay, good. Um, couple of quick, um. Couple of quick questions before I turn it over. Um, Eric, um, as far as the BPDA process, uh, has the project been fully approved? Or are you still in the design phase or pre preapproval phase? Did we lose Eric?
We may have lost him, this is Lindsay Newton from Related Deal. Um, we've received BP, we've received BPDA board approval already.
Oh, fantastic, okay, thank you. A couple of quick questions then, um. And I don't know if Eric, if you can answer this, the transformer pad, um, I was very happy to see the elevation. Um, in the past, uh, we've had this issue come up a lot. Uh, and um, the uh, the problem has been uh, the utility company's desire to keep the transformer pads at a certain level. Uh, for ease of repair, and it looks like uh, this team has been able to get that transformer pad um. To an area I think that we're comfortable with. What um, is there any story to that? So Eric is back. Um. As far as how did you get the utility to agree to um, to have the uh, transformer pad at that level? It might be just that it's. Natural for the site, I don't know, but I just know that this is, this has been an ongoing issue that we've had. I think we just admitted Eric back, he might have the answer to that.
Hi, Chairman Parker.
Yeah, yeah. So Eric, I don't know if you heard my question, I was I was wondering, uh. Yeah, I was wondering what the negotiations were for the transformer pad, because in that area. Um, we have had issues, uh, similar projects regarding the um, uh, elevation of the transformer pad, uh, with the answer being um. Utility company won't let us place it any higher, uh, so they've been in harm's way, uh, on many occasions, so we've asked for protective. Protective things like screening and and things of that nature, so I was just wondering what the uh, backstory is with uh, the sighting of the uh, pad.
Uh, I'm sorry to say I can't speak to specifics of that discussion with the utilities, but I'd be happy to uh, get that information for you, the commission.
Yeah, that'd be something that, yeah, we could do that offline, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I could, I could jump in, uh, this is General Maek uh, from SGA, the architect, and yes, we we worked with the utilities on that. To raise, you know, that that surface area to be twenty one point five, you know, that. Uh, sea level rise of flood. Uh, elevation, which is so critical, we have a set of stairs for access for maintenance. Uh, for that and fencing around that appropriate to meet the needs uh, of the utilities, so it's in conformance with those discussions that we've had.
Fantastic, that is very helpful for future hearings, I appreciate it. And then finally, my last question is about the deployable flood barriers. Um, I was talking to someone. Uh, Eric, probably someone you know pretty well, Rich McGinnis, about um, uh, deployable flood, flood wall. Flood barriers, excuse me, uh, flood barriers, and um, what what he had said to me is that there is a large amount of um, human, um, or yeah, operating error. Um, because the uh, deployables uh, need to be uh, deployed like once a year, some sort of a drill. Um, to make sure it works, to make sure that um, personnel knows how to deploy the um. Uh, feature itself or the barrier itself, so uh, I would assume uh, you wouldn't object to a um. Condition in the order of conditions that the um. Uh, barrier be tested uh, annually, just to make sure it's a good working order.
Um. I I am sure that building operations folks and and the team at Related, that that would be fairly standard practice for for any of their buildings. I don't necessarily see an issue with that, but I'd prefer to uh, confer with the team. Unless Lindsay, um, who was on the call or Mark, um, or can okay that. I don't see an issue with that necessarily.
Okay, I appreciate that Lindsay, thank you. Okay, Elena, um, do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything on this.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Long?
Uh, I have nothing on this, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, hey, first, thank goodness for this uh, our submissions being digital now, because I saw it was. Four hundred and eighty-five pages, which would have been in the banker box, so.
Yeah, I gave our production folk uh, some fits, my apologies.
Um, anyways, so a couple of things, just to jog my memory, um, this is the the twenty two Dry Dock was associated with the production facility for Vertex, right? And that was why it was in alignment with the DPA? Or am I thinking of a different project?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand the question, um, that about the designated port area. I can say that. Um, there are certain parcels within the DPA, which the city uh, through the master planning process for the Marine Park. Uh, intends to be used for. Under that plan, what's called general industrial uses, and general industrial classification includes lab, research laboratory and office. Um, so there are a limited number of parcels in the DPA that will be used for um. General industrial, you know, typically what we consider commercial uses.
God, and I I guess. Yeah, I I was just trying to remember, there was, there was some sort of. Production facility that had come before us that was two phased and. Her, I was, I I don't know if it was this one and with Chair Parker, maybe.
There are a. Yeah, there are a couple of projects um, that are likely before you, and I believe twenty four Dry Dock is one of them. Uh, you reviewed that earlier this summer. Um, they are. Related in the sense that they are, you know, general industrial uses, um, generally, although twenty four Dry Dock has other uh, variety of industrial uses as well.
Okay, so.
Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry, yeah.
No, uh, I apologize. Uh, when you first posed your question, I was, I was distracted. Um, what? What's this line of questioning about the DPA?
I was just trying to remember that there was a project that we had that had sort of a split phase of construction. I thought Vertex was involved, but it was, it was a pharma manufacturer at least. And that as a part of it, the first phase was. Minimal sort of soil disturbance, et cetera, et cetera, and as a part of the second phase, they were going to be coming before us with borings and other. Understandings of what contaminants might be on site, and I was, I was trying to find it, and it wasn't, it's on Dry Dock, I don't know if it was.
Oh. Yeah, I have the same recollection, I don't know specifically the project, I don't think it was this project, though. I'm sure it wasn't, um. Yeah.
No, that 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 was not us, I'm sorry to say.
No, that's, sorry. There's a lot going on over there, which is.
Yeah.
Overall, um. Anyways, uh, I appreciate the inclusion of a full landscape plan. Um, we have gone back and forth about the inclusion of Ginkgo before. In terms of it being and uh, basically understood to be urban tree in Boston and tough sites, but. Obviously waterfrontage. I just, uh, just wanted to double check that your team had sort of done that, gone back and forth portion of that.
Uh, I I would call on my colleagues from ground, uh, if they are on the call. Um, to speak to that, but I would certainly, I I think that we could. Ride you with an update on the selection of Ginkgo, um. If need be.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, yeah, Ground's happy to answer and as I said, like appreciate that this is probably one of the better landscape plans that we've seen in all of Seaport. So that's been fantastic.
That's great to hear. They are terrific.
Yeah. The other, the other part, I just didn't see it when I was trying to get through, but in terms of maintenance and irrigation and other things for that landscape, we've noticed not necessarily in this area, but other parts of Seaport, just salt spray, wind, tough growing conditions. Do you guys have that in place? And I guess that that's probably more of an administrative approval if you do have that in place.
Yeah, so we, as a team, had a preliminary conversation about that matter exactly in terms of flushing soils, soil types, irrigation, so on and so forth. And yes, Ground has accounted for that in their specs. I can't speak to specifics in the plan set that you have in front of you, but if you need additional information, we would of course be happy to provide that as part of our pre-construction documentation.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that would be good. It's not a, you know, sort of line in the sand issue. It's just a doing diligence so that we don't hear from neighbors that things aren't working out the way we thought.
No, fair, fair point. And, and one that I know for certain that, that Ground is considering as they're doing their design work.
Right. I guess two, two then more general questions in terms of just what's coming before us, because as I said, these were a great set of plans. You know, EDIC, I believe, is sort of the owner of the land.
Correct.
Well, how, how is that working in terms of, I know they were trying to work with folks who had the ground leases in terms of broader scale coastal protections. I know you guys are doing your due diligence. I was just wondering how, what's going on with that and what we should be in terms of expecting and going forward.
Sure. So I can't speak specifically for every parcel, but there is the Climate Resiliency Fund for the Marine Park, for which certain tenants will pay into a per rata share, including this project site. So these, this applicant, this, this project is a essentially a partner with the city in any future district-wide resiliency solution that might be proposed for the Marine Park. And certainly is, would be a stakeholder, if not a cooperating entity with those future plans.
Oh, that, that's great. That's, that's good to hear. And then the last sort of general question, I was excited to see the Boston Real Estate Inclusion Fund included. And I'm sure that they have been, especially with their mass port activities, a part of other proponents. I was just wondering how, I know that, that, that's been a city priority. How that may have influenced any of the design or other choices and, you know, selections you may have made during the course of the project development.
That is well, well above my pay grade, Lindsay, or, or Mark.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So they've been part of, part of our equity team from the start. They've been involved in our entire team selection. That was included as part of the RFP. It was submitted back, back in 2021 at this point. And then they've been included along every step of the way ever since.
Yeah, no, that, that's great to hear. I guess I was just kind of thinking as like in terms of design choices, in terms of environmental justice and other things that I know are part of their priorities, whether you might be able to point to some of the decisions that you made along the way.
Can't off the top of my head think of one specifically. We do provide them reporting on, on just general, like MWBE involvement on, on our design team, our construction team. But I, I can't think of something specifically that they've influenced.
Yeah, no, all good. As I said, general question. The, the plan seems sound and I was kind of wondering if there is a link between some of the plans we've seen before versus the plans we're seeing in front of us now as to whether the partners at the table made a difference or not. All right, I defer to my other commissioners. Thank you.
Yep, it's a great question. And I think what is that, the Rodinger theorem or something that the very act of someone being involved will change the activity. So maybe that's the answer here. That being said, Commissioner Richmond?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I have a question about the, what's at grade and what's above grade. I'm sure you gave this information, but could you tell me again, the, the building entrance is how far above grade?
Existing grade?
Yeah.
I, I apologize. My, my, my connection to our work server is down, hence my earlier issues, but it is several feet. So what I can say is that the entrances are two feet above the sea level rise base flood elevation for 2070, that elevation 21 and a half, Boston City Base, I believe existing grade at site is somewhere around 15 or 16 feet, Boston City Base.
So there, the, the 2070, the, the entrances are two feet above 2070? Is that what you're saying?
2070 flood, yeah, the projected flood elevation, correct.
And, and so to the extent that you have the entrances to the garage at grade, that's where those devices that the chair talked about are going to be installed. Is that right?
Correct. There, there's a, a deployable barrier at the garage entrance. And then there's also one at the, at the loading dock.
Okay, and, and when they are installed, what, what is it that you think will be the level that they will protect to?
Up to 21. Yeah, approximately 21.5.
Just to 21.5, okay. And, and where in the, and again, you may have said this and I maybe just didn't hear it. Where are the utilities in this building?
All mechanical equipment, switchgear, et cetera. If they're not on the roof of the building or yeah, primarily on the roof, but you know, there is some logical equipment that is within the building column itself.
And at what elevation is that? Do you know?
It would be no lower than 21.5, the ground floor elevation. So again, two feet above that base flood elevation for 2070.
Okay, okay, I, I, I have, everybody, you know, comes to these matters with their own set of experiences. I unfortunately was in Manhattan last Friday. And, and it was, it was, and I was born in Manhattan. I grew up in New York. I, I've, I've never seen anything like that. And so I'm now even more focused on making sure that, you know, to the extent that we can, if you're building a building that you're expecting to last, the, the useful life of this building is, if there's the architect on board, what, what is the useful life of this building that you're going to build?
It's, I would say it's beyond 100 years, actually, the way it's being designed and, and it's, is a state of the art. So we want to protect the science that is going in here. So there's been a careful placement of this building relative to, you know, the sea level rise, base flood, and that's how we get to the sea level rise design flood elevation to protect the science that's happening as well as the occupants in the building.
Right. And, and so, you know, and I, I think that's clear. Everybody has said that from, you know, the, the very attractive presentation that you've made. But again, I am, and this is based on no scientific evidence, but I am just very skeptical at the, the projections of the lower levels of sea, sea level rise because between stormwater and sea level, I think, you know, if this building manages to stay above it for 100 years, none of us will be around, but you really deserve a medal. Thank you very much for answering the questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Just a couple, one, just a reminder, I think Eleanor did remind you because it sounded like you addressed it at the end, but we do have redevelopment requirements for land subject to coastal storm flowage and those, those should always be in an application as, as were the others. The others, I noticed that you are using previous pavers and I wanted to suggest an annual maintenance requirement for those as well as they don't function over time if they're not kept clean or vacuumed. Any issue with that?
Could you give me a sense of what that condition might sound like?
Well, it either would be, you know, maintain, maintain the previous pavers annually or more specifically vacuum them annually if, if that. I, I'm not aware of any other way of maintaining, but.
Yeah, I just, if I can interject here, I think what we've asked for before, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Commissioner Herbst. We've asked for the manufacturers' maintenance specifications or whatever you would call it to be filed with, with staff.
Yep, absolutely. That, that's totally fine. We can provide you with those, those specifications.
Okay, would that be instead of something saying that you need to do it?
Yeah, no, I think that the condition would say you need to do it per the manufacturer's specs.
Thank you. Bye.
But that's how we've handled it in the past because we're yeah, you know what? That's a good point, which manufacturer, I guess of the pavers themselves. But that is how we've handled it in the past, as opposed to leaving it open-ended, maintain, you know, annually. Because I think we're having issues with us not being able to determine if they should be maintained, you know, whether by vacuum or sweeping because the pavers are different. I know we've had this, this discussion.
No, that's fine. As long as there's, there's an understanding they need to follow whatever those directions.
No, it helps me to talk it out. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I am seeing one hand raised.
Okay. Jessica?
I raised my hand by mistake.
Floor's yours.
She said it was a mistake.
Oh, by mistake. Sorry. Okay, okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to to close the hearing and issue an order of conditions with two, two additional conditions. One, that the deployable flood barriers that they be, how should I put this? They be exercised, they be annually, I don't know, I guess. I don't know if you need to deploy the whole system. I remember we have another property owner who does it annually and they do a portion of it. And the reason they do that is just to make sure that the operators know how to deploy the system. They don't necessarily have to have the thing encircle the property. So I guess it would be to check the deployable system and make sure that operators are fully trained to, to deploy the system. And we can figure out the language on that if I give it a little bit more thought. And then to Commissioner Herbst, the annual maintenance requirement for the pavers pursuant to the manufacturer's specifications. And that was the motion, if someone would like. Thank you.
Chair Parker, I just had the bit about the like maintenance and irrigation plan, but for administrative approval.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So that's added to the motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Eric, it occurred to me as I was stumbling through what we should do about testing the deployable. There might be some, the manufacturer might have suggestions on that. So if you could just check into what their recommendations are, and if we could see that, that would be helpful, not just for this project, but other projects where we have this, excuse me, this type of feature. Okay?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll see what I can provide. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061963 and Boston file number 2023-053 from STV Incorporated Corporation on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. For utility lighting improvements, including installation of new light poles and new conduits located along Soldier's Field Road between the intersection of the Elliott Bridge and Western Avenue, Alston, Mass. The resource areas are 100-foot buffer zone, riverfront area and waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. Aliya Sadawi from STV. And I'm on behalf of DCR, Yvonne Johns. She's the PM and our colleague, Priti Sriraj from STV as well.
Fantastic. Okay, floor's all yours.
Thank you.
Can I ask you before you get started though?
Yes.
We've approved a lighting along the Charles River Basin. And as a matter, and I remember it well because I actually did the site visit for the certificate of completion. This feels like it's very similar. Is this?
It's, it's, it's the same one. It's the same one, but, but get expired.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So this is the unit construction of lighting along the Charles River Basin Parkway. If you move to the next slide, please. So just to give you an overview, let me just move the camera. Okay. So DCR has requested to convert the streetlights from the existing ammunition lamp sources to LED sources. So basically just replacing and, and upgrading the foundations, the lights and the light, the lighting infrastructure along the Soldier Field Road. So the project was split into two phases. Phase one was completed in 2020, which was between, if you see in the red area, it was between Elliott Bridge and Soldier Fields Road. And then the original NOI, as Michael mentioned, that it was approved for both phases, phase one and two back 2018. But the original NOI is expired and this NOI just for phase two. So as I said, phase one was already completed in 2020 and this is just for phase two, which is from along the Soldier Field Road parallel to the Charles River between intersection Elliott Bridge and Western Avenue, which is shown in blue. That's phase two. If you go to the next slide, please. Yes. So as you mentioned, it, the resource areas are the 25-foot riverfront area, the 100-foot buffer zone to bank and the 25-foot waterfront area. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the, it will be just replacing and upgrading the existing light poles. If you can see here, this is just replacing the light poles and then any conduits, the existing conduits will be abandoned in place and then will be replaced with a new conduits. And then I believe some, some manholes as well will be abandoned. And basically we are just working in the sidewalk and we are not impacting any trees. And in the plans, we make sure that the contractor, if they need to work near the trees, they will need to work around the trees and they, we will provide, we provided also tree protection detail for that. Next slide, that's the beginning of the phase two. The same thing here as well. If you can see it, just the light poles and then new conduits as well. Next slide. Okay, that's continuous. Okay, keep, keep going. I think five, five, yes. Okay, and then one more. And this is the, the final slide. That's the final location. And then if you, just like last slide will be about the climate change. So we're aware of the sea level rises that will be about So we're aware of the sea level rises that will be uh about thirty six inches uh rise uh in twenty seventy. Uh they will be also increase uh in heat waves. Um but we uh D C R is aware that that there will be no um any any climate change impacts uh by the project. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to, yes.
Great, thank you, Ali. Um so quick question on the um. On the light poles themselves in the event of flooding, um how how will they be protected? If you can protect them at all?
So I think we didn't think about that one, but.
Yeah, let me, let me be more specific. Uh that was actually way too general a question. Um is there any um sort of infrastructure um at the base of a light pole? That might involve, let's say, some sort of fluids um that operate the lights? That um in the event of a flood, uh could the integrity of um, you know, whatever is containing those fluids? Could be breached and then flow into the um river wetlands resource areas? I guess that's my question.
I think I don't believe so. I don't think there will be any, will be um impacted by any flood.
Okay. I mean, it makes sense to me. It would just be electrical conduit um base without any sort of, I don't know. Uh assist from any sort of uh fluids, but that that is the concern that I have here.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there anyone who on the call who might know?
Yeah, we do not, uh good evening, uh Chair Parker. So we do not believe there are any uh fluids or anything that would get into. Um the Charles River as part of flooding. Um it just, the poles are there, pole foundations are there. And there are conduits and wires will be pulled through that, so that's basically the infrastructure.
Yeah. I'm actually looking at a depiction of a um similar light pole right now. And I'm seeing what you're saying, uh what you're saying, so, okay, that makes sense. Um, thank you. Uh Eleanor, did you have anything on this?
I do not have anything on this.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
Thank you for the presentation. Uh don't have any questions. We need flights on our roads, so.
Yes, uh Commissioner Wilson?
That makes all my uh questions seem rather trivial now. Anyways, uh two questions. One, um I was just curious and you may have addressed it somewhere. But why an N O I versus an R D A? I was just, because like if a utility company came before us. This would have been basically a replacement in kind or sure, things might have moved around. But at at the end of the day, you're not really disturbing anything in long term.
I guess the um only reason would be we did apply for an N O I before it expired. And so now that we are reapplying for that, um that was the only reason um why we um submitted this N O I.
Okay, that that's that's a good reason. Appreciate the higher burden of proof and consistency. That was sort of what I was wondering. Um, the second bit was is that just totally anecdotally in terms of going through the intersection where you had done the work in twenty twenty. Um it did seem like the uh whatever junction boxes were open for quite a while. I was wondering if that was like due to COVID suppliers or whatnot. Um I'm I'm imagining it's things well beyond your control, but just wanted to clarify.
Um perhaps Yvonne, would you have an answer for that one?
Uh yeah, it was the time period that it took to get the equipment. Um it actually ended up, the equipment we had ordered, um the location it was coming from, they had had a flood. Um so it delayed the equipment coming in, which was what caused the delay in it getting installed.
Okay, no, that's basically it's just not because of environmental commission, conditions, which is our concern. Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, are you?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I am not seeing any hands raised or nothing in the inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and well, order the, yeah, oh boy. Issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
All moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh that carries five to nothing. Okay, thank you, Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from the Massachusetts Port Authority. For the proposed National Grid gas line installation on Service Road to Building Five and Buildings Five and Six A. Located at one ninety Prescott Street in East Boston. Um who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh good evening, uh Chair Parker, members of the commission. I'm Chris Bush with Massachusetts Board Authorities, Environmental Planning. And Permone Division, also here this evening with Stephen Fletcher, one of our engineers. And project managers in our capital programs. Uh while uh Dul Kadar with our consultant Stantec as well as Victor Santana. Uh from National Grid, as noted, this is a request for determination of applicability. Uh for the installation of a four inch uh gas line existing right of way. Uh within Logan Airport's uh North Service Area. Uh this is an area within uh coastal flood zone, uh land subject coastal storm flowage. And I'll hand it off to uh Stephen and team to discuss uh the specifics of uh project scope and schedule.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And by the way, congratulations on your new position. Thank you, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um thank, uh good evening, uh members of the commission. Uh my name is Stephen Fletcher, uh senior project manager with Massport. Uh if we could go to the uh next slide, please. Uh and actually, one more, thank you very much. Okay, so uh sorry for the uh small graphic looks at the size of a postage stamp. But uh just to get familiar with the project location, uh the little uh green arrow that you see sort of towards the middle of the top portion of the graphic. Uh we're over on the north side of the North Service Area of um the property on Massport on uh Service Road. Uh near the intersection of Prescott Street. Um so if we could go to the next slide, please. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're zoomed in a little bit more. Uh so here you see we're at the corner of Prescott Street. And Service Road, and just to get more familiar, the economy parking garage um. And also the existing fuel tank farm and the water tanks and the pumping station for the airport itself. So the the thin red dash line represents approximately six hundred and ninety linear feet of four inch. Uh gas line that we need to install um underneath uh Service Road, the street, surface of the street. And into the uh parking lot that runs adjacent to the pumping station and building hang of five. That we're um intending to refeed uh with the uh four inch diameter gas line. Uh the next slide, please. Uh okay, so back to an a more engineered type drawing. So again, uh with the corner of Prescott and Service Road. And you can see that uh the shaded areas that uh were impacting the uh protected floodplain uh zones, if you will. And um what we'll attend to do is we will install um catch basin inserts. And uh filter tubes along Service Road uh to protect um the adjacent area. Um worth noting, uh we're not changing the topography. Uh basically, we're trenching in the street and in the driveway. To install this gas line and then uh basically pavement restoration. And um that's essentially it, so I I wanted to keep it brief for you folks tonight. Uh and uh I'd like to open up to any questions you may have.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. And I just want to reiterate that you're very lucky to have Chris on board here.
Agreed.
I don't have any questions on this. Eleanor, do you have anything?
I do not have any questions on this either. Thank you.
Great, um Commissioner Long?
Thank you. Uh thanks for the presentation. I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry, um I guess my question is just sort of more generally like, I know Massport is. At the leading edge of uh climate resiliency and other actions that we're taking to make sure that, you know, we have sort of. Assurance of operations of our critical infrastructure and stuff like that. And I was wondering sort of what the trade off might have been if you'd done like an analysis alternatives of. Replacing this gas infrastructure versus like a decarbonized or some other alternative solution.
Yeah, the authority right now, as you may know, has a uh a carbon neutral. Twenty thirty one program that we're working very hard at currently. Most of that is focused on scope one and scope two. Um aspects of carbon emissions, so those are emissions, uh equipment that Massport controls. As well as our our power purchase agreements. Um scope three uh trying to influence our our tenants and aircraft carriers as well. On that, uh this being uh utility infrastructure, um. You know, I don't know if National Grid can speak more to that or or not. But um in terms of uh our objectives, again, by by twenty thirty one, we are looking to be. Uh carbon neutral and by twenty forty, hoping to have everything off of of carbon altogether. So uh we have a a consultant team that's been working for the past eight months. Um going through all manner of our capital programs, uh purchasing, um really all divisions within the authority. Uh to determine how best to um a transition off of of fossil fuel sources.
Um yeah, thank, thanks, thanks, Chris. Um is National Grid on the line or?
Yeah, I think uh Mr. Santana, he might have been on our last call as well.
First time on the call, Commissioner Parker. Uh as far as National Grid, uh I am not aware of any alternative uh path or options. That were looked at by Massport in regards to this specific project. Um as I understand it, this is uh for a line, an existing line that needs to be retired. Um due to the uh structure being demolished and we are looking to continue to provide. Uh service to other structures in within the footprint.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Um and obviously, uh Chris, I I was trying to, I was setting you up to succeed on that one. So I don't think anybody in front of us is, I don't know, Chair Parker, you may correct me. Um has even started to mention scope one, two and three um in terms of their thinking. Um and I I think that's really important. Um I guess I don't know enough about the infrastructure. And sort of the trade off between what Massport needs versus what uh National Grid needs to provide. At current and um this is. One of those things where it might be that. You know, Na- National Grid is i- is required to provide service of a certain level. To an existing customer that in the future may not need that level of service. And there is perhaps. Now kind of going the opposite direction of what I just asked about the last N O I that was probably an R D A. Is whether this is an R D A, that's actually an N O I, is whether this is a pause for consideration in terms of whether this work. Um needs to, you know, it would be done if it were at a different point in time. And um whether the broader community needs to be involved in understanding. What this means in terms of continued operation of um. Infrastructure that does impact, you know, air and water quality. I am also trying to commissioner, uh channel Commissioner Condon on this one, so.
Yeah, were you in our last hearing?
I mean.
Do you remember a National Grid representative came to talk about their um?
Pipe diameters, yes.
Renewables, yeah, and renewable um program.
Okay, I may have missed the broader discussion of renewables.
Okay, okay.
But.
Yeah, I am, okay, I I have some materials that I can send your way that I got.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought I was at that hearing, but I I also, the the what I'm hearing described and that this is not. It it sounds like a fundamentally different type of relationship of National Grid to a single customer. Versus National Grid to like a street of independent owners. That would have various considerations, so.
Yeah, I I can see that, understood. I see where you're getting at. Okay. Okay, uh Commissioner Richmond?
Um yeah, yeah, I I mean, I think I was um just where Commissioner Wilson was. Uh and wishing that Commissioner Sullivan were here uh to ask the questions that he asked about. Um the expansion of those pipes. But if I understand what you just said to Commissioner Wilson, it isn't the same thing.
Uh no, I think uh to summarize it, there are two things. One is that um the increase in diameter. To the piping, and I think this is what you're asking, um. Uh is generally attributable or attributable to the um material being used for the piping. I know there's a, there's a transition from metal to plastic, so uh naturally the diameter has to be larger. So larger diameter doesn't necessarily uh mean that there's going to be more. Uh more fossil fuels pushed through the pipe. And number two was um. National Grid did appear to talk about their program to uh become more reliant. Or their their switch to renewables. Um that's what I was talking about.
Okay, all right, then I I I'm. I'm I'm still not clear, but I think my questions are probably not relevant to this particular project, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thanks.
Okay, uh Eleanor, any anyone from the uh public raise their hand?
I see no raised hands.
Okay, uh so with that, I would uh entertain a motion to issue a negative uh determination of applicability. With the um standard erosion control conditions.
All moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I I can't vote positively because I I I guess. I don't understand why Massport is submitting the R D A on behalf of National Grid for their work. So I it seems atypical. And it's okay, it it's a lack of perhaps not hearing the right words in the right order or the 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 error may be mine.
Okay, so you're a.
Stain, I guess, or no, yeah.
Yeah, I think I think you would be a no. I'm not telling you how to vote, um but an abstention would be um basically just didn't have enough. Well, I'll leave it up to you and the stench.
I I would say I don't have enough information and I would continue or request an N O I. Okay, my counter proposal.
Okay, so to be clear, your vote is? No, or?
It would, it would be a no to a negative R D A.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Richmond?
You know, I I'm much in the same place. Um I'm not nearly as well informed as Commissioner Wilson. But um I'm just uncomfortable uh with the differences between the way in which we generally get. Uh requests of this sort and the way that this one is coming through. So um I don't know enough to say no, but I think I'm going to abstain.
Okay, um Commissioner Herbst?
I'll vote aye.
Okay, and I'm gonna vote aye, so that carries uh three one one. Um, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Good, um, okay. There've also been a number of continuances, uh continued our notice of. There've also been a number of continuances, uh continued our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven zero four in Boston file number twenty twenty. Dash zero zero seven, uh DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two in Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero one zero. Um DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one. Uh and now uh with that, we will begin our regular meeting. Uh first item on the agenda is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number. Zero zero six. One seven eight one for a seawall rehabilitation project located at eighty five East India Road, uh downtown Boston. Eleanor, what do we have on this?
Yeah, so um for this, I just want to report back, so. Uh staff had actually conducted a site visit previously, I believe it was last year and had noted that the site was clear.
Oh, I am, I am so sorry, I need to refuse myself, uh my law firm actually represents the property owner here. So Commissioner Herbst, could you do the uh honors here?
Sure, so Eleanor, what do you have for us?
Great, yes, uh so staff had actually conducted a site visit previously, I believe it was in the fall of last year. They had noted at the time that the site was clear and all work appeared to be complete. Uh the filing itself was was also complete, um but the the holdup was that uh the applicant had not included a resiliency report at the time. Uh since then, the applicant has provided us with a resiliency report, it's been reviewed by staff. Uh and and we would recommend issuing a certificate of compliance based on uh this additional submission that seems to uh. Seems to complete their filing and and satisfy the conditions, it's uh specifically. Condition number seventy two uh that was noted in their order of conditions for this resiliency report.
Okay, let me see if any of the commissioners have any question about that. If if not, if there is no question, uh I would uh entertain a motion to uh issue the certificate of compliance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, ah geez, I never, Penny, uh Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, uh so that's four to nothing and I think that's all of us. Back to you, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, that's what happens when you just read words on paper. Of thinking about it, um okay, um next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven four zero. Um from Charlestown Sprites Inc. for the, yes, Sprites, Sprouts Inc. for the um. Renovation of an existing community garden uh located at two two, two five five Medford Street in Charlestown, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yes, so um to to follow up on uh an update I'd provided previously. Uh we'd conducted a site visit on September fifth and uh the work was complete, but there were still erosion controls, a DEP file number sign and tree protection barriers that were up. Uh staff requested that these be removed uh before we were, we uh, yeah, before we were able to recommend to the commission that they issue a certificate of compliance for this work. Um we have since confirmed that all of these items have been resolved and therefore staff would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for this work.
Okay, any commissioners have questions? Okay, with that, I would uh entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven four zero.
Oh moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it carries five, nothing. Okay, uh next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven four nine. From the Dorchester Yacht Club for the proposed seawall repairs located at one hundred Placeded Road in Dorchester, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yes, so staff conducted a site visit on October third, photos from the site visit are available in the drive for the commission's review. Um you may note that in some of the photos, uh you might see some some loose stones that were sort of at the base of the of the seawall that had been repaired. We followed up on that and asked uh just to ensure that those weren't, uh that was a debris from from the work that had been done. Uh we were able to confirm with the applicant through photos um from a few years back that 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 um those stones had already been there before the work had began and or. Excuse me, begun and and that's why they hadn't been moved. Um and so based on this, we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for this work as everything else seemed to be resolved.
Okay, thank you, uh do any commissioners have uh any questions on this? They're fantastic photos, by the way, if you took them.
Thank you so much, it's why I was hired.
Great lighting, okay, uh with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP phone number zero zero six one seven four nine.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing, okay, next item on the agenda is uh our administrative updates. I know you have some big news.
Yes, uh very exciting news, um so our team is rounded out, which uh for the first time uh since I have have. Joined staff, which is very exciting, um so DeeDee is our new conservation assistant and um DeeDee, if you wanted to maybe introduce yourself to the commission, I'll I'll give you the floor.
All right, hi, everybody, uh my name's DeeDee Hernandez and I'm a recent graduate of Dartmouth College and I majored in environmental studies. And I'm super excited to start my work with the Conservation Commission and I'm based in East Boston.
Great, fantastic, welcome.
Thank you.
Shortly needed, we are so happy to see you. Eleanor has been doing multiple jobs, um.
We're very good. And um I actually, I apologize, I had a a second quick administrative update which uh had slipped my mind until, sorry, not slipped my mind, hadn't included that um previously, but. Um and I had had a chance uh right before, actually, the day before I tested positive for COVID and before the last hearing, um I had had a chance to follow up on that dumping. Um question that you'd raised and uh over by River Street Terrace and I just wanted to follow up on that, that I I was able to to go out there, um. I was out there uh solo, so I wasn't, I I didn't wander too far, but I was able to see some of the dumping that was in question and I uh I just wanted to to follow up, so I'm gonna be. Um reaching out to to the person who had uh originally flagged that for you and and probably doing another site visit with a little bit more detail to to sort of see what can be done to res- resolve that, so I just wanted to thank you for for flagging that.
Great, thank you, and for other commissioners to know, I, somebody reached out to me about dumping happening along the the Ponce River, so.
Okay.
Administrative updates, yes.
Sounds good, um and I know that um you, we don't have the meeting minutes ready because of your illness, so um. DeeDee or uh I think maybe you'll be, you'll be working on minutes for a while. Um we've got a little bit of a backlog here, so um when they're ready, uh please let me know so I can take a look at them. Um, so with that, uh I think the last item on the agenda is a uh motion to adjourn by acclamation, any objections?
Nope.
Okay, um thank you very much, uh and I guess we will see you in two weeks, take care.
Thank you so much.
Bye.